Will you stand for the Pledge of Legions? Please call the roll.
Counselor Olson.
Yeah.
Counselor Bridge. Counselor Bender. Counselor Stenberg. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Joyo.
Yeah.
Counselor Finson. Counselor Herrick. Counselor McKenzie. Counselor Brown. Counselor Nowiki. And Counselor Saether.
For the record, Attorney Perrell has been excused for the evening.
First item is the approval of the minutes from the August 2nd regular council meeting.
You've heard the motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item six is the consent agenda.
You've heard the motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.1, Finance Director Vito is submitting the 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Program Budget.
Finance Director Vito.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all recall, we had a presentation just a couple of weeks ago on this and there was a motion to take a little more time and let you think about the projects that were presented to you on that night and then bring it back tonight for further discussion and any questions that you may have. I haven't heard myself any questions since we made the presentation a couple of weeks ago and if counselors did have questions, maybe you contacted other department heads. The only change that I would ask you to consider would be in the painting request for the Fairlon Museum and that request was put in the year 2016 and in discussions with Jason Cirque and Sarah from the museum, we're making a recommendation of moving that up to the year 2013 instead. So, other than that, all of the other, the revenue estimates and the cost estimates for the projects remain the same.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, we just had come from a museum board meeting and we discussed it there and the reason that they'd like to have that moved up is there's a lot of bare wood on the museum and if they wait an extended period, that wood is going to start to rot and then we're going to be replacing wood and shingles and everything else on the side of that museum. So, they would really appreciate it if we would move the painting up to help keep the building in good repair. Thank you.
We'll take that particular item separately. What is the pleasure of the council with regard to moving that particular CIP up? Heard the motion in second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carried. The CIP is open for discussion. Heard the motion in second to approve, discussion. Counselor Brown.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I really think that this is the proper thing to do at this time because, you know, the times are hard for everybody and to be able to be able to put some people back to work, I think is just, you know, really the proper thing to do at this time and maybe later on if things get better in this world and employment picks up and things like that, then maybe we can relook at the policy and start to put more money into the saving and paying off bonds early, but not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKenzie.
McDonald. I'm sorry.
M-C-M-A-C.
I was wondering if Ed wanted to speak? Did you want to speak?
Well, I guess I actually thought this was item was going to be addressed in the committee of the whole meeting, but since you are addressing it now, I'd like to speak to it now.
Yeah, it was listed on the regular agenda even though it was referred to the committee of the whole because of the bonding resolutions that are at the end of the meeting, the CIP needed to be approved.
But I didn't speak to the issue on the committee of the whole meeting, but if you're going to approve it now perhaps.
Now would be the time. Yeah.
Hi, Ed Anderson, 6077th. Some of you know me. First of all, I'm wearing this shirt for a reason tonight, just so you know. Jim told me without steroids, it is 600th.
Home runs.
I've done that. So, as you may expect by the way I'm dressed, I'm here to talk about baseball. As you know, the city has been very generous in refurbishing the Hayes Court Complex baseball fields. We put new lights in for the Babe Ruth Field, new fencing on all the fields there and it's a wonderful job. In the upcoming CIP that you've now extended a couple of years, there's some wonderful projects for the Hayes Court Complex that's listed in the CIP, mainly the drainage projects and the road projects, the parking, that sort of thing. And I read through all that and I certainly have no objection to any of that being done. But I did notice there was one item missing that I think should be part of it and that was lighting for the two Little League fields. That's not, it was in the project in the past, but there wasn't enough money to do all the fields at that time out of that CIP. Now, I assume that perhaps it maybe was just overlooked or perhaps it's still part of that previous project, but I'd like you to please consider if not adding, rearranging the funding so that lighting can be put on the two Little League fields. Reason I say that is to expand the program, especially when we get into this year, say we wanted to have fall baseball for some of the younger age groups. It's very hard to do that at this time of year because it gets dark. It gets dark earlier in the day. We had tournaments this summer which we had to put time limits on games because the Little League fields get dark and so they can't play when it's too dark, obviously. It's a safety concern. So, I'd just like you to please consider, I know SYO has agreed with the city, the city's been very generous to co-sign, I believe, a loan to build a second concession stand that SYO will pay for out of their funds and as you know, they did build a concession stand there and that's been in use and should SYO dissolve and never not be part of the ball field complex anymore, those buildings will then belong to the city. So, I'd like you to please consider if possible. We did have estimates before for that lighting project. It was, I think, around $60,000 per field, so it's obviously something that would fit into the CIP. It's, you know, more than 10 years, 10 years in value and beyond a certain dollar amount. So, thank you for your time. I probably have gotten to the three minute limit, but Prog's not here, tell me.
You came in under three minutes, Ed.
But thank you for your time and if you had any questions for me, find, otherwise I'll sit down. Thanks.
Counselor McKenzie.
Ed. Yeah, I think this has been a real important thing, you know, I think with those baseball fields and the youth and, you know, I remember when my two sons would play there, my oldest one's 25 now, but it's still an important thing to me and I really, really appreciate what you've done there and I'm all for, you know, improving that and if it means lighting, I think it's a great idea, but I think the biggest thing is having people like you that care and you put so much time into the volunteer work, so thanks for that support and I support you.
Well, thank you. The SYO Board does a lot of work on there and Steve Olson, of course, the president, does tremendous amount of work there and Jim Ross, who is Ross Paint, they're over there all the time and of course, Dan probably won't see that. His brother's doing a good job over there, but he is.
And that concession stand, that turned out well, I think, because that was part of the tourism board gave funding for that as well, wasn't there?
There's been support for the program. I'm not sure specifically what the tourism board funded, but yeah, the concession stand has worked out well.
Good.
But the concession stand is between the Little League fields and with the project, the concession stand that was at the other end by the Babe Ruth Fields and near the softball fields is not in operation and that's where they intend to put a second concession stand.
Good. Thanks.
Vice President Herrick.
Yeah, Ed, do you think Water, Light and Power would be able to help us out or combine with the city on a project like this?
Well, we looked into, when we did the first project, we looked into some of those lighting grants and it quite frankly, isn't enough wattage for them to consider a grant. They were looking at bigger projects, but the mayor is well acquainted with lighting, lighting ideas and maybe he knows something that I don't know about, but we did try that. We did, along with Mary, did contact the Water, Light and the first project to see if there was any grants available to do the energy efficiency of the newer lights.
Okay, thanks.
President Olson.
Ed, just for the record, my mother said my brother does a good job over there, so.
Well, I've seen him there. I think it's his second home, quite frankly, but.
Yeah, I think so too. If I could, Mary, do you, can you shed some light on this because I know this was in part of the process, I believe, two years ago when SYO came before this council for some funding on that.
Yes, yeah, thank you. And Ed, thanks so much for supporting the facility tonight and every other night. The reason that the lighting is not before you right now is that in talking with representatives of SYO, they are really clear that the parking lot and hard surface and that surrounds the facility is their priority. Now, there's been some talk of a second concession, which I believe would be their next priority and there might be a little misunderstanding, Ed. The finance committee has not gone on record in favor of a loan to date and I think SYO may want to return and revisit those discussions, but at present, the city hasn't agreed to a loan for a second concession. What you see before you in this plan are all, are the priority items, meaning the park board and the council have agreed that they should take place in years one to five and some of you may not be aware that we have a relatively new master park plan with $14 million of improvements recommended, $8 million of which are considered priority items. The lighting that Ed is referring to actually was, has been identified as a midterm item, not a priority item, but a six to 10-year item as opposed to a one to five-year item. So, in bringing you the capital improvement plan tonight, of course, I had $8 million worth of stuff that has been identified as a priority and of course, we had to pare that down and we did so in significant communication with SYO and its leadership and I know the lights on the Little League field are near and dear to your heart and you have spoken quite eloquently about them. It's just that we can't afford to buy every single thing in this moment.
If I could respond to that, I have talked, and I am on the SYO Board, by the way, and I have talked to the president of the SYO. The priorities are not necessarily things that were written in stone and part of the problem with doing a lot of the repairs and the parking lot and putting a lot of impervious surface out there, which you from Stormwater Ideas understand that that's a kind of a problem, is that if you do all the improvements and then come back in a couple of years and then start digging for lighting poles and things like that, you're going to disrupt what you put in. So, things kind of have to be done in an order for it to be done correctly and so I would say that I don't think the SYO Board would object to moving the lighting and as I sit on that board, would object to moving the lighting up. Thank you.
Just another comment regarding this, the budget for, or the CIP for 2012 has approximately $75,000 in for the Hayes Court Fields. What that will entail is removing the base, the current mud base for the parking, putting class five down on the mat for the compaction of the new parking and roadway and then the possibility of sewer and water run the lines for the second proposed or possible concession and then, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, in 2013, it'd be the black topping of the entire area. Am I correct on that? What we could explore, following up on your suggestion, is I should also say that we should congratulate and thank Superior Water, Light and Power Company. They just made a major contribution, in-kind contribution for running the wiring for Heritage Park, for the skateboard park, for the fencing and secure, not security, but motion sensor lighting that'll be placed there, maybe is placed there by now. They donated in-kind contribution of about $10,000 of underground wiring for that particular park. What we could explore, if the council wishes, is to look at the lighting and segmentation as former counselor Anderson said, maybe not disturb the area once we complete it by having the wiring for the Little League Park done sooner rather than later and possibly the foundation footings and then look at that as far as what it could cost in the near future rather than disturbing the ground later on and then looking at the price of the standards and lighting at another date. We could explore that for you if you wish. Thank you again.
If I could just add on to that, from a construction standpoint, you're exactly right. The infrastructure as defined would be possible sewer and water to another part of the park, but the lighting as well should be done ahead of time. I will tell you that if you were to do it after the fact, you would have to, without disturbing the property at all, you'd look at boring and you're looking at three times the cost. I deal with this every day in my capacity in the construction industry and if we are going to do it, the best resolution I would like to see right now is to hold this in, table this item, do not approve it one way or the other, this portion of it and maybe have my brother, your board, come back and make a presentation and see if we can't make it work. If it doesn't, we have another avenue we have to go back to. So, I'm not sure what kind of motion I would like to make here other than it would be appropriate to table this item till the next council meeting.
Heard the motion in second to table this particular item until next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the rest of the CIP. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.2, Finance Director Vito is submitting the 2012-2013 General Fund Budget Initial Introduction. This only needs a receiving file and it will be brought back on August 16th for discussion.
Heard the motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, I'm sorry. Director Vito.
Just a correction, it'll be brought back on September 6th. Yeah, it's okay.
Thank you very much. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, carried.
7.3, Planning Director Cirque submitting a request by Eventite Telecom, Inc. for a telecommunications easement from the City of Superior on the northwest portion of Connor's Point.
Heard the motion in second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
7.4, Planning Director Cirque submitting a request by Ashley Tenlin to purchase a city-owned vacant lot at 1213 Weeks Avenue and requesting to put the property up for bid.
You've heard the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, carried.
Item 10.1 is the resolution introduced by the Plan Commission authorizing a special use permit for transitional housing at 318 21st Avenue East.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
10.1 is an initial resolution of the City of Superior relating to the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $3,800,000 for the street improvement program.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What is the pleasure? Heard the motion in second, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
10.3 is an initial resolution of the City of Superior relating to the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $2 million for improvements to the city's landfill.
You've heard the motion in second, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
10.4 is an initial resolution of the City of Superior relating to the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $400,000 for the purchase of a fire engine and other equipment for the fire department.
You've heard the motion in second, discussion? Hearing none, I'm sorry, President Olson.
What is the other equipment?
It could be add-ons to the, what my understanding is the base price of the truck.
So, that's all, we're buying one fire truck and then all the security stuff like we have with the police vehicles will be the extra. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion, I mean, opposed? Motion carried.
11.1 is an ordinance that I'm submitting relating to the final wards in Ossama district. There's a publication requirement with this ordinance that I missed, so I'm going to ask that you hold this until the September 6th meeting for approval. I have to get it published correctly.
Heard the motion in second to hold. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, carried.
Business by public, we have a presentation by the University of Wisconsin Superior Academic Service Learning Coordinator, Janice Meyer, to form a learning partnership between the business writing students and UW Superior and the city councilors.
What do you need, ladies?
Hi, I'm Beth Karavasich. I am instructor at UWS. This is Janice.
Janice Meyer. I reside at 1111 North 22nd Street in 7th District.
I think I'm in the 1st District.
Correct.
John Avenue. I'm going to try to get our slideshow up here quickly and what we would like to do tonight is tell you a little bit about academic service learning. We'd like to talk about a project we'd like to involve you in, working with my business writing 209 students. I'm sure you are, most of you are probably aware, thank you, Janice, of the Bender Bulletin that goes out to.
Some people call that the Bender Bowl.
I've heard. Janice is an avid reader of the bulletin and she thought it would be a great idea to get our students helping to get some information out about the community to people in your districts also, so we're thinking of making partnerships to get more bulletins out. I have a handout here and.
Let's see if I can pass it out.
Sure. So, what we will talk to you a little bit about is what academic service learning is because it's a great thing growing on our campus and then I'll talk a little bit about my course and what we are asking of you and then you can ask us any questions you like. So, Janice, I can progress your slides here if you'd like to talk a little bit about academic service learning.
Thank you, Beth. Well, thanks for having us tonight. Academic service learning is part of our liberal arts or one of our liberal arts initiatives at UW Superior and it's a teaching method and a form of experiential education and the reason that we utilize this is that we're looking to have our students gain real-world experiences and be able to apply what they're learning within their classes to be able to assist with a community or assist with nonprofits or small businesses, assist them with meeting their needs. It's oftentimes confused with volunteering or community service or internships and I think this diagram does a pretty good job of explaining that difference. Academic service learning is focused on the outcomes of a course and where volunteering or an internship is focused oftentimes on the provider or otherwise the recipient. As far as the nature of service, oftentimes internships are based on a career or industry goals or the student's future career aspirations. Oftentimes volunteering or community service is focused on, based off of interest of the student or the individual, where service learning is actually based on the academic outcomes of the course. So, it's not an add-on to a course, it's not an extra, it's actually a form of teaching that involves the students within the learning process. There's four different types, there's four different models of service learning. Here's some examples of what we've been doing at UW Superior with involving our students in the community. A placement model, this is pretty typical, oftentimes what people think of right off the bat, where we have our students going out into the community and directly applying what they're learning. An example is we have some psychology students in a behavior modification class that have been teaching some of their, using their behavior modification skills to teach manners to some of the dogs at our, for them to be able to learn more manners so they're more likely to be adoptable. So, that's an example of a placement model. A presentation model, we had, most people are probably familiar with the trackorama in Superior that happens every spring, all the 5th graders from the city go and join in. Well, one of the things that was happening is students would have one or two activities that they were involved with and in the in-between time or the before and after, they were kind of bored or maybe missing an activity or whatnot and so what we teamed up with was one of the biology professors had their students take what they were learning in their class and create really fun, interactive, nutritional, educational activities and tables for the students to participate in between those events at the trackorama and that was the first time we did that this last spring. A product model, we've had some of our computer science students create websites for local nonprofits and an example of a project model is some of our social work students, this has been going on for years, have conducted research or done program evaluations for local nonprofits. We've just started, we're still in our infancy with this initiative, but we've had some huge gains over the last couple of years. Just this last year, our office worked with 28 faculty members and we actually involved 871 students in this form of experiential education and you can look from 2008, 2009, it's pretty substantial, the growth that we've had. The benefit to the community, it looks like we lost a little bit of the slide on here. The number of hours that students have contributed to addressing community needs or working alongside of the community and applying what they're learning in class, what that value comes out to in a dollar amount, just from this last year is a little, or a quarter of, over a quarter of a million dollars, so it's something that we'd like to continue to do and like to continue to grow. And now, Beth, to share a little bit about the specifics of this partnership that we're looking to form with you.
Thank you. I teach writing 209, business and professional writing and I asked Janice to help find a project for this course because it can get somewhat dry and this I copied and pasted right from our syllabus, this is what business and professional writing is supposed to do for our students, this is what we do in the course. We're trying to get the students to think about how do you present yourself in the public, in a business. I have lots of social work majors, I have lots of business majors, obviously, I have lots of transportation and logistics majors, so they're going to be in the community a lot or they should be and the sooner we can get them thinking about that and actually doing it, the better for them. So, what we would like to do is create more of these bulletins. Send them out to your districts, not just, not just the Bender Bulletin to Bender's district, but each one of you to have a bulletin to go to your district. This fall, I will have 18 students in our course and I would like to partner them up with each one of you if you're willing to participate. them up with each one of you, if you're willing to participate, and have them put together a newsletter of local issue stories, interviewing you, interviewing citizens, putting together something that will be informative, something that people will want to read because it's of the moment. I know that this Bender Bulletin goes out, I think, once in the fall, or towards... Right, in the spring, in the fall, and that's what we're looking to do. This course, writing two oh nine, is a required course, it happens every semester, so if we could do one in the fall with you, and one in the spring with you, that would be great. If it, if we test it out this semester, and you don't like it, or it doesn't work, you are not obligated to continue to work with us, but it is something that can continue. Students will be responsible for the interviewing, they will be responsible for the writing, they will be responsible for putting together the bulletin, and what's required of you is mostly time. Time to sit with them, to talk to them, maybe give them ideas of what to cover. I put a short timeline together here. We would like to have this wrapped up and printed and ready to go by Thanksgiving, so that we have December to finish up the semester with finals and such, but we also wouldn't like to start until the students would have a chance to come to one of these meetings. Because we start on September sixth, and that is your next meeting, I would have to give them the option of the next few meetings, so we probably wouldn't be able to start until October to actually get the students out to interview, to contact you, things like that. And the why we want to do this, obviously, we want to promote them to be engaged citizens, not just wait until they are out of school, but, you know, they're right over there, and that's pretty much where they stay all the time. So if we can get them out and get them realizing, oh, writing is important, or, oh, I should, I could be involved in this right now and not have to wait another two years until I graduate, it will definitely benefit them, and hopefully all of you. So as I said before, you know, your participation is not mandatory, so we would love to have it be, and depending on who, how many of you participate will depend on what the newsletters will look like. If we have all of you participate, then I could have two students work on one newsletter for just you. If we only have three or four of you, we'd probably assign a student or two to interview you, and then the rest of the students would kind of do general interest stories about littering in Superior, and that littering story would appear in every bulletin, and then your address to your constituents would just be to your, in your bulletin. So content is going to change depending on, on who participates, but we can discuss that more. One of the things that is on the bottom of that sheet that Janice gave you is an RSVP date. We do start school on September sixth, so I would like to know who will be participating by then. Janice's information is on there, my information is on there to contact us, so if you don't get to talk to us tonight after this meeting, there are a few ways to contact us on there. If you have any questions, we can answer your questions.
Bender?
Yes, I have, I have some questions, and these have kind of been answered, but just to bring them up for everybody's edification, I guess you could say. Whatever vehicle is written, whatever bulletin or what have you is written, it could, it could be general, or it could be a district specific, correct?
Correct.
And, yeah, I also heard you say depending on how many participate, because my second question was, is this going to be working with one student, or with more than one, like a small group, but you kind of answered that. And one question, since I, I pay for the Bender Bulletin, I write it, I pay to have it printed, and I hand deliver it, who would be paying for this bulletin printing, and how would it be delivered?
That would be, depending on how many councilors participate. We do have some of a budget to be able to assist financially with that. It would depend on what the city could do, as well as what the individuals would be willing to do. Warren, if you don't mind me asking, do you know what it usually costs for you to print for a spring or a fall edition?
For two reams of paper and printing, it's fifty or so dollars.
Okay.
And my time, I guess that's worth nothing. It's good exercise.
So that, that's a detail, that's something that, you know, is negotiable, and something that we could figure out, but great question.
Okay, well, and thank you guys for your presentation.
Mr. McKenzie?
Yeah, I, I think this is a great idea. I've always said, I've always admired Warren for, for doing what he, what he's done, and it's been, you know, really an aggressive thing that, that he's done, but I think it's a great idea, but seeing as how, you know, his is, his is going to be this model for all this, I think that we'll do, we'll do my bulletin for my district, but Bender, seeing as how it's the Bender Bulletin, Bender's going to deliver, hand-deliver my, my bulletin. What do you think, Warren?
Well, as soon as the mayor recognizes me...
He recognized.
I'm, I'm still going to, oh, lots, lots of feedback tonight, but I'm still going to do the Bender Bulletin, because I, I have a specific format. Every title in mine is a sixty's song, and I don't tell who the artist is until small print at the end, so I'm, I'm still going to do that, but I'm, I'm thinking of, of something that could, could take on a kind of a different slant, as far as that goes.
Hand-delivering mine.
Well, hand-delivering yours, or, or cross-country ski.
And depending how, like I said before, how many people we have to manage, you would have a lot of creative input, too. It's, it's your bulletin, my students are creating it for you. You, a lot of the time would be in meeting with them, to talk to them, but also, once they write something, you would read it to approve it. It either goes in, or it doesn't go in, or you, it can be changed depending on what you want or don't want, so it would be time on your part, and it would be what you want it to be.
Any further discussion? Counselor? Since I get my exercise at the Y, and it doesn't include walking, I'd specifically like to know, how is this going to be delivered, by whom?
Bender. That's only the Bender Bulletin.
That would definitely be negotiable if someone wanted to deliver them, and have conversations, or, you know, along the way as they were delivering their, their bulletins, or whatever that might be. They could do that within their districts, otherwise, we could talk with the students and, and figure that out. Again, depending on how many people participate, we're still really in the creative stage and process, and this is the first time, so it would be a pilot, but hopefully you're interested.
Mayor? A hundred dollars of our monthly salary is dedicated to covering expenses, so I, you know, you can, you can pay them.
Thank you for the very, very thoughtful presentation, and the opportunity, it would work well for the city and all the citizens, and our students, too. So, a reminder, September sixth?
Yes, and it's right on the bottom of those sheets, I was going to go through and highlight it. And we'll be around after the council meeting to, to end some of our questions.
Thank you again. Is any other business to come before this body? Second, all in favor? Your stand adjourned.
Just a reminder, we have the committee of the whole meeting next. All the department heads are left, I don't think they, they don't need to be here.
Okay, we have a scheduled committee of the whole meeting to get going on here. Before we do that, I would like to recognize a couple of young fellows sitting out in the audience out here. I believe they're on a Boy Scout mission, that they're attending a city council meeting. Caleb, you okay at a microphone, or want to tell us what you're doing here? There, they're a blast.
Come on up to get, hear all the feedback.
All right, well, anyway, what, what program you got, Caleb? What badge, or whatever you got going? Citizenship? Okay, well, it's one of their requirements, the citizenship, and Mike?
Well, as a Boy Scouts leader, I'd like to just elaborate a little bit, yes, citizenship in the, in the community, working on, and one of the requirements is, is to, you know, come to a meeting like this, and, and pick a topic that, that interests them, and hear about that topic, and then use that as part of their, their presentation, and that is a required, Mayor badge, for their Eagle Award, so, so it is, it's an important badge, so, welcome, Scouts.
These guys yours? No? Okay. Anyway, Patty, thanks for bringing them. So, committee of the whole meeting, we have established roll call at the regular council meeting, so item number one?
Okay. Item number one, Councilor Brown is requesting an update progress report from the Friends of the Carnegie Library, and I believe someone, we have representatives here from the library. It's, does anybody, is anyone in need of the packet? Okay.
I'm Linda Canelius, I'm the executive director for the Friends of the Superior Carnegie Library LLC. We are an LLC, we're not private nonprofit, so we've been paying taxes on the building since we took possession of it about four years ago. The goal at that time was simply to preserve the building, to save and preserve the building, and we, we struck a chord in the community, I think when you look at this picture, it is a treasure, a city treasure. A lot of people grew up going to this library, but we found, if you go and Google it, you'll find people still visit this library, they blog about it, when you're having your class reunions, they're talking about it, and within a very short period of time, we had sixty-eight individuals who sent membership interest into the library to save it. Anywhere from fifty-dollar amounts up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars. So we had enough to purchase the building, and to set aside to begin work on the building, minimal work, we're not developers, it was simply to preserve that building, but to take care of some of the major issues that were confronting us four years ago. In the beginning of this packet, you'll see that it's all volunteers, and I, I want to give recognition to Mark Lack, and Kim Coop, Bob Swanson, Valerie Burke, Jim Ames, Sean McKenzie, and Karen Frenzick. That's just a handful of people, but they have been making sure that the, the shrubs are pruned and cut back, that the lawn is mowed, the windows are washed, that we do the spring cleanup, they removed the graffiti from the building, we had workdays, we've replaced the broken windows. When some derelict cars started appearing behind the building, we worked with the city to get those cars removed, we turned on the lights, we turned on the water, and we've tried to be good stewards of this building that's been basically placed in our trust to preserve it until such time that it can be developed further. There's a lot of potential, you, the, the critical need right now is a leaky roof. I've been in the public sector for forty years, and I swear that almost every building I've ever been in has a leaky roof, and so we have the damage that's come along with a leaky roof, and you'll see scaffolding on the building, we have continually patched, and patched, and patched. We don't have the resources, quite frankly, to really get up and, and do the, the complete roof, we've gotten estimates of that. We found one firm out of Mason that would, just for the labor, was fifteen thousand, and then we would provide the materials. So we know what the issues are of the building, we also know that it's a structurally sound building. It was constructed to hold a whole lot of books, and anybody who's moved, you know how much books weigh, they're heavy. And so we've been taking care of the building. When you look at our list, that's really the extent that I think you can ask volunteers to do, and so we're, we're just continuing to be diligent, and have begun to work with leaders in our community to see what can we do. When you go in that building, you can visualize a museum, you can visualize law offices, you can visualize a restaurant, you can visualize an art gallery, you can visualize all sorts of uses for that building, and I'm optimistic that once our economy starts picking up a little bit, there are going to be individuals that will want to preserve this building, and, you know, to, to have it for the future, for our kids to see, because it is part of our history. In the early nineteen hundreds, Superior was the first city to get a grant from Carnegie. It was totaling sixty thousand dollars, which back in the early nineteen hundreds was a substantial amount of money. The only other city that got a larger amount was Madison, they received ninety thousand to construct their library. We have Carnegie libraries that are still in operation in our state, but this is one of the very, very first, and it is a building that needs to be cherished. Having been in the public sector for, for my entire career, I believe in total transparency, so the report that we've given you shows the chronology from the time we took ownership of the building up to the present, total transparency of the funds that have come in, what those funds have been used for, and we've been very, very careful, because those funds are, are limited. Any issues that have been brought to our attention, we've dealt with, and I know that one of our neighbors came through on the tour, and we were able to answer some of his questions, I think, and hopefully his concerns have been allayed. I think he was worried that mold was drifting over on his property, I don't know what other concerns are. At any time, if you would get a call from a constituent, and they were wondering what's going on with the library, just simply call one of us, and we'd be glad to respond, and either address the issue, or meet with the person who was concerned. I don't know what your, what your questions are, any concerns that you might have, we're here really to answer questions, and to let you know what's been happening since we took possession of the building four years ago.
Councilor Brown?
Yeah, excuse me, it was probably my suggestion that brought this to the forefront, it was a call from a constituent that brought this up, and I really thank you for doing everything that you have done. I'd like to commend your volunteers for all the work that they, hours that they have put into this project, and I personally would like to thank you for preserving such a great building for the future.
Couldn't do it with all of those people that stepped forward as Friends of the Carnegie. It was, it was obvious that this is a building that means a lot to, to the citizens of this community. And I told them, anytime, just give me a call, I'll be glad to, to take them through the building.
Len? During the tour, I was surprised to learn that the Carnegie Library is not, there's not an application to have it placed on the National Historic Register, and I'm me concerning, well, I'm curious about it. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure, we just had our annual meeting, and Kathy Laxo has, has been appointed the historian, and she is beginning to take a look at the paperwork, document, there's a lot of pictures that need to be taken, we need to really explore the pros and cons of getting it on the National Register. On the one hand, it helps preserve the building, and if you do not accept any federal money, you can, you can change the building, but once you've accepted federal dollars, you cannot change that building. If you're restoring it, it has to be restored to the original condition. So that's my understanding. So we want to really explore that, and make sure, you know, it's the appropriate thing to do, it may be something that we want to have everything in place so that the future owner of that building can, can move forward in that direction if they, if they chose to. of that building can, can move forward in that direction if they, if they chose to. We, we don't want to limit our options. On the other hand, we want to take what steps we have to, to, to make sure that that building is preserved.
Councilor McKenzie.
You called him Len.
Yeah. Okay, Senior Mick.
Yeah, Linda, I just, I just wanted to, you know, thank you. You mentioned, you know, about being, you know, stewards of that building and, and that's wonderful. You know, thank you for that. Thank you for everybody that's, that's here, Val and Bob and everybody that's, that's worked on that building, you know, preserving it, you know, taking care of it. And at the same time, you know, you're paying, paying taxes on, on this building. This is what I think we should have done with some other buildings in the past, but, you know, that's all gone. But I, I think Ed, I think was on the council, I think, the last time that some people, representatives were here from the Carnegie Library. And I think he said it best, you know, that the building is being taken care of, it looks nice, you know, to, to the community, it looks nice. And we're just waiting for this developer. I know that's been kind of a slow thing, but I'm hearing through the grapevine that there, that there might be people very, very interested in, in using that building. And I think for some of the people that probably have asked, why, why aren't we fixing the inside? Why aren't we giving, why aren't they getting permits for the inside? Well, you're not going to do that because you don't, you don't know what the end result is or what the purpose is, and that's why we need a developer. So I want to thank you and everybody that's, that's worked on that project. I want to thank Ed, you know, at that time for supporting that group then. And I want to continue to support, to support this building. And I'm, I'm, I'm confident that we're going to get someone in there and, and everybody's going to be proud of that building.
I, I agree with you. And the, the support from the council is, is absolutely critical. Anytime you, you work with Economic Development Corps and others, they'll tell you that the leaders of your city, it's absolutely critical that you have that support. So thank you very much for your interest and for future support.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have anything else? Valerie or anybody else? Okay, if not, entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you.